Looking for a place to work your upper body? Take a shot here at our Stingray Shuffle. Looking to relax? I got you covered here with our lazy river. Living more on the adventurous side? Check out the slides right behind me. Newly painted, all offers something individual and unique. Check it out. Check out the main pool kept at a wonderful 84 degrees all year long. I just want you to have a good time. We have safety covered. Lifeguards here staffed all day, every day when we're open for you to enjoy. Concession is open. Pizza, pretzels, nachos, ice cream. We got it all. My crib is your crib. Looking forward to seeing you here.
To each and every one.
Duty calls.
I'm Stacy Losio. I am the emergency management coordinator for the city of Northport, and I'm going to be talking about having an evacuation plan. It's important to have an evacuation plan ahead of time, and it's very important to write it down because that way you can have it somewhere present where everybody in your family can see it and keep it fresh in their minds. And you want to also share it with people in your family or your neighbors so that they know what your plans are ahead of time and how to get ahold of you or where to look for you after a disaster. For your evacuation plans, you should have multiple routes to get to the location you're planning to go to just because traffic-wise, traffic on 75 might be gridlocked. There could be some very good backroads to get to where you're going that could get you there more quickly without being stuck in traffic. When you're making an evacuation plan, we usually tell you four different things. You should stay home if you are not in a zone that's being evacuated and if your home is built to withstand the forecasted storm. If you can't stay home and you evacuate, your next option should be to go to a friend or family's home that is outside of the evacuation area and is structurally sound to withstand the storm. Third option would be go to a hotel. They're much more comfortable than our evacuation centers. Fourth option would be to go to one of our evacuation centers. Sarasota County has 12 evacuation centers. Those can be found on their website. I'm Stacy Losio. I'm the emergency manager for the city of Northport, and I'm going to discuss first responders after the storm. So it may take a while for first responders to get to after the storm, and that's due to a variety of reasons. One being we pull first responders off the roads when tropical storm force winds are sustained for their safety. That is a standard usually across the state and other states that I've heard. So we will have a backlog of calls that have come in during the storm that we will prioritize based on urgency, and they'll be responding to those as well as the calls that are currently coming in if they're urgent. Also, the roads might be flooded. There might be debris in the roads. Our tactical first.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, 6:00 PM. We're in city chambers, and I call the city commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners present, Commissioner Duval, Mr. Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emmerich, Commissioner Petro, as quorum present for the meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, Assistant City Attorney Coghlan, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Lane, I think Deputy Chief Morales, and Fire Chief Titus. And Michelle, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Oh, my goodness.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor to approve the agenda. Let's vote. And that passes 5 to 0. City Clerk, we have public comment? Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Valdi Hollander. I come here in peace, and I am not a criminal. Stokes, I am instructing you to order policemen off my back. I have a dignity, and please respect it. Why don't you? It is people's right under Florida Constitution to instruct their representative to disobey you all. Where is the police over here? Is any officer around? No, I don't see it. No municipality around this respect people like you all. Move podium in the middle. How many times I gonna order it to you? You have no consent to proceed further unless you adhere to instructions. Please do. Under budget 2026, I am instructing you to use prudence, not greed or the hatred, and get consent of we the people of Northport on proposed budget by the manager. Let me now tell you what people need in Northport. Four major things, and those four major things shouldn't be taxed. Number one, shelter, either the home or house, whatever you call it. Number two is energy. Number three is the water. And number four is the food, which you don't have a hand on it, I believe. For example, in my May energy bill, I paid $20.32 for the fuel which produce kilowatts used in the May, which is one-seventh of the total bill Florida power line charged. Local taxes, which is city taxes, I assume, and franchise tax, was $19.24, which is 86% of the fuel charge which produce kilowatts. What's going on? Why we are so poor? So the fuel used, so 85% of my bill is the tax, tax, fees, charges, tax on the tax on the tax.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, City Clerk. Up next, announcements.
The current vacancies for the following boards and committees include the Art Advisory Board, Auditor Selection Committee, Charter Review Advisory Board, Citizen Tax Oversight Committee, Community Economic Development Advisory Board, Environmental Advisory Board, Firefighters Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, Historic and Cultural Advisory Board, Joint Management Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, and Veterans Park Advisory Committee. Sarasota County Advisory Council vacancies include one resident in Northport to serve on the Citizen Advisory Committee. If anyone would like more information, please see the City Clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Moving on to consent agenda. City Manager, any items been pulled?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. City Clerk, any public comment? Then I'm looking for a motion. I'll make it move to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to approve the consent agenda. Let's vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on to public hearings, Resolution 2025-R-44. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Resolution number 2025-R-44, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Northport, Florida, approving solely for the limited purposes of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code and Section 163.01 Florida statutes, issuance by the Capital Projects Finance Authority of its educational facilities revenue bonds, Imagine School at Northport Project, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $60 million. The proceeds from the sale of which will be used principally to finance and refinance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain charter school facilities located within the city of Northport and owned and operated by Imagine School at Northport, Inc., authorizing the execution and delivery of an interlocal agreement with the authority, approving a conflict waiver request submitted by Bryant Miller Olive, P.A., providing certain other matters in connection with the bonds, providing for findings, providing for payment of fees and costs by borrower, providing for no liability or endorsement, providing for indemnification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Imagine School at Northport, Inc. requires approval to receive tax-exempt funding for a project referred to as Imagine School at Northport. To finance or refinance the cost of the project from the proceeds of the bonds on a tax-exempt basis, it is necessary that a public hearing be held, and the issuance of the bonds be approved by the city because the school will be located within the city limits. The city is indemnified, and any attorney fees will be paid for by the school. We ask that you approve Resolution number 2025-R-44 today as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Duval.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, all we're doing here is making it legal for them to get their bonds. This isn't costing the city anything. And in consideration of the recent news that the school board is delaying the development of a couple of schools in the city of Northport. You know, a new high school is planned down in the Woodlands section. This is a project that was being financed by the Imagine Schools. I can't see where we would be against this in any way, shape, or form. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Any public comments? There is none. With that, I'll close this public hearing, request a motion.
I'll make it, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution number 2025-R-44 as presented.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Vice Mayor to adopt Resolution 2025-R-44 as presented. If there's nothing more to it, let us vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on to ordinance, second reading. Ordinance 2025-13. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, approving the Imagine School on Price Boulevard Development Agreement for the construction and maintenance of central water and wastewater facilities, the construction and maintenance of two bridges, and the maintenance of retention ditch R588 for the property located north and south of East Price Boulevard and east of North Toledo Blade Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for approval, for providing for filing of approved documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn it over to Mr. Gabriel Quintus, our Development Services Assistant Director, to lead us through the conversation.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-13. This is for approval of the development agreement associated with the project proposed by the Northport Imagine School. Associated site development and infrastructure plans are currently under review by the Development Review Committee. Currently, no waivers to the ULDC are requested, which means that the approval of the plans is handled administratively by means of a development order issuance. Approval of this ordinance does not approve the development. The proposed development site comprises four parcels, which total approximately 23.935 acres and a zoned corridor with a future land use designation of high-intensity corridor. Schools are permitted by right in the corridor zoning district subject to compliance with the development standards of the Unified Land Development Code. The site is located along East Price Boulevard and is proposed to contain an approximately 139,500-square-foot educational facility catering to students from kindergarten through high school, accommodating up to 1,500 students. The facility will contain two gymnasiums, two cafeterias, an athletic field, and a playground designed for younger students. The school site will incorporate essential infrastructure, including water and wastewater facilities and a stormwater management system. Ingress and egress points are proposed along East Price Boulevard and Glenbrook Boulevard. The Imagine School at Northport currently contains two locations near Toledo Blade Boulevard. According to the developer, the new campus is intended to be complete in time for the school year, beginning in the fall of 2026. Existing campuses are intended to be relocated to the proposed educational facility. The contents of development agreements are governed by Section 2.2.8 of the ULDC and Florida Statute Section 163.3227. The development agreement outlines the developer's responsibilities associated with constructing and maintaining central water and wastewater facilities. It also encompasses the construction and maintenance of one roadway and one pedestrian bridge proposed to be constructed over retention ditch R588 along with the maintenance of the same ditch. Parties to the development agreement include the developer, Imagine School at Northport, the owner, Forest Plaza LLC, and the city. The term of the agreement is 10 years with two automatic extensions built into the agreement per the request of the developer. Improvements required to maintain the city's adopted level of service requirements will be required to be provided concurrent with the impacts of the development. Notices of intent to consider the development agreement have been advertised pursuant to Florida Statute Section 163.3225, and staff recommends approval of ordinance number 2025-13. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? Anything to this item? And no public comment? Alright. And I'll close this public hearing, request a motion. Move to adopt ordinance number 2025-13 as presented. Got a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Duval to adopt ordinance 2025-13 as presented. If there's nothing more to it, let's vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on to general business, 25-2354. City Clerk, this is your item.
Yes, this is discussion on possible action regarding the appointment of Tim Drum or Terry Chaney as a regular member for the Community Economic Development Advisory Board. We received these two applications and have one vacancy for a Northport resident. Mr. Drum submitted his application on May 19, and Mr. Chaney submitted his application on June 3.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Duval.
I'm going to kind of insert a preference here based on the fact that Mr. Chaney is a veteran officer in the AMVets post. I'm a veteran myself. I kind of have a preference. That's my reasoning.
Alright. Anybody else?
I have a question for City Clerk. City Clerk, how many seats and what seats are open on this board? Do either of those gentlemen qualify? So they're both really going for the resident seat? Okay, thank you for that.
Mayor, I got no problems given veterans' preference either. There's nothing... Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Petro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to get my preference in. I could see that there was a backup material for resume. The Mr. Drum, he's a professional engineer, and I've dealt with him on numerous occasions. He helped. He has helped a lot with construction services throughout the city and beyond to various clients. He has an extensive background and experience in construction and engineering, and that might be very helpful for the development of the city, specifically for this board. So I just want to recommend him and make my preference known. I think he's a good and valuable asset for the city despite any personal issues that some might have against him. But I would highly recommend his appointment to this board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else to this, folks? Mr. Langdon?
Yes, I have a question for City Clerk. We do have an engineering seat on that board, do we not?
Yes, we do.
And it is filled?
It is filled. Until December of 2027.
Okay. And so there is no professional or content expertise anticipated or required of the resident seat, correct? Okay, thank you for that. I would just comment, I would take the nod to a veteran in this situation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody, anything else? Any public comment?
There is none.
Which case on question of motion? Well, by one I'm hearing, I'll make it. I move to appoint Terry Cherry as a regular member for the Community Economic Development Advisory Board. Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Duval to appoint Terry Chaney to the Community Economic Development Advisory Board from June 24, 2025 through June 25, 2028. There's nothing more to that. Let us vote. And that passes 4 to 1. Mr. Petro, reasons stated?
I just feel like he's not only engineer, but I know him personally. He's a businessman as well, manages a lot of people. So that's why I voted no. And for the previous reasons I stated.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to 25-2355. City Clerk, it's your item to introduce.
Discussion on possible action regarding the appointment of Omi Patel or Samara Naeger to serve as a student member on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from June 24, 2025 through June 25, 2026. Omi submitted their application on May 23, and Samara submitted their application on June 6.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? Yeah, any one of these veterans?
Not yet.
That's all I had, Mayor. Anybody? I mean, I will say that I've read both their resumes. I mean, these are two up-and-coming leaders. They really have great resumes, and they've accomplished a lot in their years so far. I'm a little... I lean towards Ms. Naeger only because she is local to the city of Northport. And Patel, it lives out of the city. But both would make wonderful candidates here.
Mayor, I believe both of them do live in the city.
I'm sorry?
They both do live in the city.
Do they?
Yes. They are allowed to attend schools that are not in the city.
I got you. Alright, I stand corrected. Both make great candidates. They really do. Anybody? Commissioner Duval.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a tough... This is a tough one. Omi has called me and spoken with me a number of times. I have been an advocate for youth members on our boards, and I've gotten in touch with various people and organizations. And because of that, I'm... I'd like to see both of these young people out of board. So I cannot, you know, in good conscience, I can't say vote for one or the other. They are both. If you read the resumes, these are amazing young people that have done a lot in a very short lifespan. So if anyone chooses to make a motion for one or the other, I'm not going to be opposed to either one. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Yes. City Clerk, when would the next possible position on a board for a student be available?
We currently have two vacancies on the Art Advisory Board. We have two vacancies on Environmental Advisory Board. Yes, youth. I have one on Historic. I have to look into that one further, but...
Alright, just a little further on this board. When would the next?
Now, it's a year. So this term will be for a year.
Okay, so there's not... There wouldn't be another one. There's only one position for a student on this board?
They have two. The next Gavin will term out February 26 of 2026.
Okay, so that's six, seven months down the road?
Yes.
Because what I was thinking of is if they're still interested in this board, you know, if we went with the... I don't know him too well, but the one that applied first, put that one in the position now, and then since the other one terms out, this individual already has their application in. So they would be the first pick in February. And I think that's a fair way to look at it.
Gavin could reapply in February as well.
You just said he turned out.
I meant his term is over.
Well, it's different for us, I guess. When you're done, you're done, so.
All right, so, yeah. But he hasn't applied yet for it, has he? She has.
Commissioner Langdon?
Whatever you guys decide. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be inclined to go with the first applicant since they both seem to be equally qualified for the position. Either put her first in line for the next vacancy, or city clerk, couldn't we give her a choice to either wait for the next opening or inform her that there are student seats open on some of the other boards?
Yes, we can do that, and then see if she's...
Yeah, she might be interested in it.
In one of the others.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
We can do that.
Okay, great.
Right. Anything else to this? Any public comment?
None.
There is none. I'm looking for motion.
Aren't you going with it, Barb?
Well...
Or Commissioner Langdon?
I can. I move to approve the appointment of Omi Patel to serve as student member on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board from June 24, 2025 to June 25, 2026. And further, to give Samara Naeger the choice of being the first applicant in for the upcoming student seat on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, or to take another student seat on another advisory board.
Second?
Already have a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the vice mayor to appoint Omi Patel to the, as a student member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from June 24, 25 through June 25, 2026, and to offer Samara Naeger the opportunity to be first up for the opening on this Parks and Recreation Advisory Board this coming season, or to sit on an alternative board. Did I get that right?
Close enough.
Good. With that, let us vote. And that passes 5 to 0.
I'm just glad that we have multiple applicants that we can go ahead and vote. So it's, that's a blessing.
Moving on to C, 25-2400. City clerk, it's your item.
There's discussion and possible action regarding commissioner appointments to the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committees and the Legislative Advocacy Committee. I have listed in your backup material the, all five of the committees and who is currently serving on those, so we'll need to know if commission wants to make any changes to those ones or keep them the same. Additionally, we will need a separate motion to appoint someone to the Legislative Advocacy Committee. For this one, Commissioner Duval was appointed to it for this, this current year, however, because of Commissioner McDowell leaving and the timeframe, he was not appointed to it in her place early enough for him to attend any of the meetings this year. They had a cutoff date, which we did not meet, so it would be my recommendation, if he's open to it, to keep him on that, so, because they already have that nomination for next year.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Anything to this, folks? What, how's everybody feeling about the committees there? They're on. Everybody want to change? Everybody happy with what they've got?
I like talking about trains, it's good.
I like talking about utilities and infrastructure.
I'm good with mine.
Everybody's good.
Everyone's happy, wow.
That works for me. Got any public comments on this?
None.
All right. Then I'm requesting a motion for...
I got it. I move to approve the appointment of Commissioner Duval to serve on the Legislative Advocacy Committee.
Second?
Got a motion by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to appoint Commissioner Duval to the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee. There's nothing to this? Let us vote.
Didn't hear an objection.
Hear an objection.
Didn't give him time.
Hasn't voted yet. There he goes. And that passes 5 to 0. Looking for another motion.
I'll make it. I move to approve the current Florida League of Cities committee assignments for 2025 to 2026 as presented on city clerk's document.
Second?
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by vice mayor, to basically approve the appointments to the Florida League of Cities committees as presented in the exhibit. There's nothing more to it. All right, so... And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on, any general public comments?
I have John Krebsbach, followed by Al.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hello. Commissioners, city manager, ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Krebsbach, and I want to talk about the development costs due to the gopher tortoise. This reptile is not considered endangered by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department, but is protected via Florida State Fish and Wildlife. One tortoise can easily increase lot development costs by more than $8,000, $5,000 of which is paid for each tortoise moved to an off-site recipient location. For an unknowing buyer, one tortoise can double the true cost of many Northport lots. This state mandate indirectly puts the rights of a gopher tortoise above property rights or developer rights, especially with the typical 10,000-square-foot Northport lot size. Why should Northport commissioners care? Lot costs can be devalued by 50% or more, reducing annual property tax revenues. Many lots will remain undeveloped. Delinquent property taxes will result due just to new or existing gopher tortoise. Developers will look to other communities where costs are lower and buyer demand is higher. How many gopher tortoises are in Northport? No one really knows, but Northport locals report the population is very large. Here are some equal rights solutions. Citizens and commissioners can talk to state representatives and encourage them to sponsor legislation to allocate some of these large local state parks as off-site tortoise relocation sites. Reduce the 25-acre minimum site requirement, or remove the gopher tortoise from the protected list altogether. Miaca River State Park alone has 37,000 acres, and based on a typical four-tortoise count per acre, could be home to almost 150,000 Northport tortoises. How can animal lovers assist? Sponsor protected tortoise, contact the Natural Resources Department to help fund this relocation effort, or set aside some of their own yard for this favorite tortoise. These suggestions should reduce development costs and offer advantages to all parties concerned.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Al Pikus. I am a 20-year resident, realtor, landowner, and I'm with the Commercial Land Owners Association. I just want to follow up on John's comments regarding the gopher tortoise situation in Northport. Has anyone done a survey to find out how many gopher tortoises there are in Northport? When I travel down to the neighborhoods just off South Chamberlain Boulevard, I often see tortoises crossing the road. I would never buy a vacant lot in that area knowing it would cost me $8,000 to $12,000 to relocate tortoises that are on my lot. One of my friends just paid $24,000 to relocate three gopher tortoises they found on his lot. I'm all for protecting the gopher tortoises, hopefully we can coexist. Actually, John and I recently set up a meeting with the city's Natural Resources Department, which I believe has grown to, is it six or eight people now? I'm not sure. We wanted to find out how we might be able to lower the costs to relocate them. The take from the meeting was that their hands are tied, since the State Fish and Wildlife Service dictates all the rules, and the Natural Resources Department just makes sure everyone follows the rules. One question we had was, since the state dictates the rules, especially the minimum 25-acre rule, have you contacted our state rep to see if we could relocate these tortoises locally? They said that they tried to contact them, but they never called back. You would think that Northport being 100 square miles would be able to find some land with habitat suitable for cost-competitive tortoise-receiving sites. What about one of the state parks that John suggested, like the Miaca State River Park? We would suggest that the Northport Commission mandate to the Natural Resources Department to find parcels of land with suitable tortoise habitat for possible off-site relocation. Also, Coloa, which is Commercial Land Owners Association, would welcome the Natural Resources Department to join us, since we, we are now setting up a meeting with our local state representative to see if we can relocate these tortoises locally. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Sarah. All righty. Moving on to Commissioner Communications. Mr. Petro?
Thank you, Mayor. Few days, I think less Saturday, I attended a kids' fishing, fishing tournament sponsored by Kiwanis Club. I was impressed by their organization and then their effort, and I saw two of my fellow commissioners there. It was an amazing event, and I want to compliment them for their work, what they did and how they did it. It was really nice, it was well-organized, well-received, kids loved it. So I think it was a good time, well-spent. That's about it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice mayor?
Yeah, I was at the same tournament, and it was a great day. Everybody had a good time. That's all I got.
Commissioner Langdon?
I once again want to thank the city clerk's office for attaching my activity report to our last commission meeting, and I will be submitting my June activity report in time for it to be attached to our July 8th meeting. But I do just want to take a moment to congratulate the graduates of, of the Northport Leadership Class. They go through a lot, they learn a lot, and I think they have a lot of fun doing it. So congrats to the grads.
Great, Commissioner Duval?
I only have one thing to report right now. I was contacted by a young gentleman who's in college, and a gentleman, I met with that gentleman, and he wanted to discuss an item on our agenda, and ask me questions about it, and he had a list of questions that his college professor put forward, and he also talked to me about possibility of getting on a board in the, in the future, getting active in Northport, Northport City activities. That gentleman took the time to show up here. He's not just a college student, he's also a law enforcement officer, and I was very impressed with him, and I want to thank him for being here.
Right. Attended the Wharton Smith Northport official ribbon cutting at their new facility, Toledo Blade. Got to see they have a nice new location for themselves. Also attended the Kiwanis Fishing Tournament, helped rig up the rods and reels the week before, and enjoyed teaching people how to cast, even though they already knew how to cast. It was a pleasure, really had a good time. Untied a few knots in the lines, and am going to actually explore the possibility of, could we ever stop that canal, although I know we'd have to have some conversations with our Natural Resource Department, God knows who else, but it'd be nice if they could catch a lot more fish, so it's, it really is a great annual event. Kids, like, hey, have a blast. I had a blast, so it was wonderful.
Well, you're a kid.
I'm a kid. And last evening, I had a roundtable with the community over at Shannon Staub Library, was reasonably well-attended, 2025 folks showed up, was, you know, good conversation. These are people who are vocal voices in our community, and I think the takeaway was they appreciated the opportunity to, you know, share what was on their mind and ask some questions, and, you know, when asked whether it served any purpose and value to them, they unanimously felt it did, and would like to see it continue, so, you know, I'm going to plan them once a month and, and see where it goes. Other than that, I think that's it for me. Moving on to charter officers, city attorney? Anything? And city clerk? And city manager?
No service, Mayor.
Right. With that, unless anybody's got anything else, it's 6:42, and I adjourn this meeting.